Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. So the agenda, there's an addition of thirteen one, which is the blanket exercise. Is there any other additions from council? If not, can I have someone?
Madam Mayor, Administration would also like to add thirteen two budget process.
Okay, any others? Okay, if not, then let someone move.
I'll move.
Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carrie, I'd like to welcome Bill to the podium to give his presentation. I guess Mike too? Just bring your chair, Mike.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bill Leep and I'm here on behalf of the Gold Rain Society. We've talked about this for some time at different times. The broken sidewalks and the sidewalk needs to be extended to the parking lot. And it would be very nice if we get our sidewalk all the way to where we need to talk, take the garbage out every day. Summertime is not bad, wintertime it gets to be a bit of a problem. We would also like to get the trees removed from both sides of the building.
Both sides?
Eavesdrop get plugged up and then the downspout gets plugged.
Every year.
Every year. I'm taking considerable time to measure up and data scale drawing of two different ways of putting a sidewalk in. The green areas on the drawing is of existing sidewalks. I think it would be nice if the town could extend that sidewalk all the way to the library end. And make it widen up so it could be as clean stain time as the sidewalks in town.
Well, you know those are capital items.
Yes.
And they would have to be added to a budget project, which will begin in October.
The council would consider putting it on the budget for next year.
So the trees built, what do you mean both sides? The other, the west side only has a bush?
Yeah, there's a bush on either side of the building. The one on the south end is, that part is fine.
That huge one on the south end is fine?
Yeah.
It's the one in between the town and the?
Yeah. Well, my wife and I have been climbing up the ladder and cleaning the eavesdrop every year and it's.
So is it those small ones or the big Manitoba maples?
I'm not sure what they are.
Cause there's a Manitoba maple and a bush. The big one, the huge one, do you want that removed?
Well, just the two on the sides where the eavesdrops are.
The one would be the Manitoba maple, which is between the two buildings.
Yeah.
And then the other, on the other side, it's several different varieties of trees in that what you call bush.
I was just there, there's a bush that's not even close to the center.
Still had lots of leaves in the eavesdrop.
You sure it's not the big one on the south side?
That one does too, but.
Okay. And the sidewalk that you want to the, to the parking lot, what do you use that for? Like to the, but it's got about this much?
Yeah, or for whatever.
Yeah.
Widen up, the machinery could clean it, cause none of us are getting any younger.
No, I just wondered, what do you use that, that one door, that sidewalk for? The one between the town, as you go out and you want it extended to the parking lot. What is that sidewalk used for?
We carry the garbage out there every day and there's people that live in that area, they walk through there all the time until the snow gets too deep every fall.
Okay, so you want the sidewalk extended from here to the library?
Yeah.
The one that goes to the parking lot has about this much space that you want extended.
Yeah.
I'm saying, what do you use that little piece for?
Well, that's our, it's difficult to remove snow off of the, off of the grass area.
It's used by people within the town who from the parking lot to the park. They walk between the two buildings. And we clean that, or the seniors, Gold Rain Society cleans that sidewalk. And like Bill says, it gets very difficult to clean it in the wintertime when there's no land, no ground. You could clean it off, or you're cleaning it off the grass. And there's about four feet or maybe.
And from that side door with the old entrance to the doctor's clinic, from there to the, to where that sidewalk ends, that is badly broken up and it needs to be replaced.
Yes, I, I recognize that, but people walking through there would have to stop at the seniors' door then, cause there's no pathway into the park from that, that way.
Well, for two things, for one, we, we carry the garbage out every day from there to the library.
Oh, I thought you went out the south door.
Yeah.
There's a south door.
Could we take a walk over there? Counsel for the German, Field Trip.
Okay, so let's adjourn and walk over there.
Bill's got drawings of that.
Yeah, but it's easier if you can visualize it.
He's got very, very good drawings.
Yeah, I read the package.
Copy that was sent to you that ended up being smaller scale.
Okay, that's okay, Bill, we'll go look at it after.
Okay.
Yes?
So the sidewalk that you're proposing that would be built over to the library, that's a major area during frostfall and I'm wondering, wouldn't it make more sense to just put a, another garbage bin over somewhere closer to the senior center? Way less cost?
Well, I thought that too, but how would you dump it? There's no parking lot close except in the front. You'd be, you'd be going on grass.
Unless it was on that little four foot chunk of sidewalk that was missing. Like if it was sat right there, if no one's really using it.
Well, it could go right here out this door because nobody ever uses this door.
To get a truck in there to dump it. I just, way easier even to put it on the side of the street, to build a little cement pad to have it sit on, on the east side of the building, between the building and the curb?
Well, that's something council, our administration could look at.
Not, but I'm just wondering whether that, they would be open to something like that. Certainly that cost would be significantly less and like I said, to go a sidewalk diagonal across the back like that, isn't that where the hill is, there's a bunch of sculptures back there?
You have to speak up.
Yeah, I have a bit of hearing.
Oh, sorry, the drawing that you've got for the sidewalk to go across,
Yeah.
that's a major area during the frostfall in the winter, there's a hill there, there's
Yeah.
snow piled up, there's.
That's the area we walk through all, all year, except when the snow gets too deep.
Or there's a hill in the way.
So Bill, would, would you be, would the seniors be agreeable to a dumpster being put in closer?
I don't know, we haven't discussed that part so.
Well, I mean, we will look at it, but that, like he says, that's an area that takes away a lot of.
Well, it's, it's not just for our members, it's like I say, there's a, a considerable amount of people walk through there all summer long and all and the fall until the snow gets too deep.
Yes?
So Madam Mayor, if a sidewalk was entertained, we wouldn't look at it till 2024. We're planning on excavating through there, a fair large area to put the new generator cabling in, so I doubt if that project would proceed. If there was a sidewalk, it wouldn't be till 2024. Cause we're planning on digging up a fair amount of area back there to put the new power cables in for the generator.
Did you hear him? So there is a power generator going in here and they will be excavating back there.
Okay.
And there won't be, a sidewalk won't go in till 2024.
Yeah.
If we proceed that way.
So I mean, that's, that's up to council as well, Bill. But, but we would have to take it to a budget, but this could be an alternative plan?
Yeah.
If we put something closer to you that could be dumped easier in the meantime?
Well, I think we could go for that, that we could consider the sidewalk from that exit door on the side to the curb if that was replaced.
Yeah. I think that's the area he's talking about being excavated through there.
Madam Mayor, the area I'm talking about is from the back corner of the town office where you exit out from the, I guess the Goofy Kids office, all along the building. So if we want to run a building, a sidewalk in the back of the building along the building, we would be excavating that area. And running a sidewalk straight across the open area wouldn't be feasible, cause that's our area for all our winter car and all and stuff. It would have to follow. Operations has looked at a couple of alternative spaces for the garbage bin lately and we could certainly investigate that a little more. And we do have some funds allocated to do some work there this year, so that could happen if we see.
Okay, so we will look at it, Bill.
Okay.
The sidewalk probably not right away, or not, not feasible cutting right through to the property, maybe some way along there that would hook up to where the dumpster is.
Well.
But we will look at it and I mean, I don't know what's going on, so.
I would say having a dumpster there, another dumpster would be a big help.
Okay.
Especially for wintertime.
Yeah. And, and removing those trees.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, so we'll let you know in October when we're done our, what's gonna happen. Thank you for your presentation.
Bill? Whenever I'll work directly with you on this, so next year too. Pardon me, you had your number? Okay, is that yourself?
What is it?
Y D five nine?
Yeah, that's myself.
I'll, I'll contact you the next year, so I'm gonna look at and show you what your results are.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wasn't yelling yet. Okay, so the approval of the minutes of our regular council meeting? Yes?
In resolution three fourteen two two, the last part further that the town financed the purchase. I didn't want someone to think that we were borrowing funds, I think it should say that the town funded the purchase from utilities reserve.
What was that again?
In three fourteen dash two two?
Yeah.
The last part that says further that the town financed the purchase from utilities reserve. We're not financing anything, we're simply funding it.
Funding.
So I wouldn't want people to think in reading the minutes that we were borrowing funds to do something.
Thank you. Any others?
I'll move them as amended.
All in favor? Carrie? So delegation from the High Level Golden Range, what do you want as a resolution, council?
Madam Mayor.
To take it to the budget meeting?
Yeah, I, I would say to give administration a chance to work out some of the crisis and it's, Keith and I have been looking at this for a while and I know the trees that Bill's talking about. And we could come back with a couple of options on, on the sidewalk or even paving a small path in behind the.
Okay, so council, someone make a resolution to move it to budget.
I'll make that motion.
Counsel Jessman?
Call me later.
I'm gonna call mine, let's see. Yeah, Clark was right in the face.
Hi, you're on speakerphone.
All in favor? Carrie? Okay, so September twenty second, for those of you that weren't here, or weren't with us out in Calgary, we met with Minister Shandro and once again, we made a request for the RPAP team to be in High Level due to our addictions and mental health problems. We discussed how we've been using the enhanced policing two and how we rely on this program. And hopefully, whatever, wherever it lies that this option will stay in there, if it's, if it's provincial police or RCMP. We discussed the evacuation multipurpose center and how it would make it much easier for first responders and policing. And it would limit, limit help from outside policing, which we didn't get anyways. We discussed chronic shortages amongst our senior, senior members due to transfers and selling houses. And right now, we're at half complement. And we discussed how we were informed that our detachment is working at half complement and they said they would look into it, whatever they're gonna do. We had a meeting with Minister Panda, we discussed the wastewater. He was in a rush to go out and announce the, the new dehavulin plant, so he, we did make a request to him and he did, is it Chad or is it gonna work with us?
Chase.
Chase. And we were to send the plan to them, did we do that?
Yeah, I got a hold of Keith and they're, they're looking at that study, we'll get it down to Chase.
Okay.
Mr. Meligan.
Okay, so we're gonna send the study to him. And maybe they will work some magic and we'll be able to do, be partners here. We made a second request to the province to provide funding over and above STIP. And town and High Level made a fourth request to the government to construct a formula to provide funding for the north because of the forty, thirty to thirty-five percent mobilization costs. Probably our most productive meeting was with Minister Horner, whom we met about the evacuation multipurpose center. They truly appreciated, in fact, the chief of staff said that they were able to understand it a lot better, that they saw the evacuation center drawing and they could, instead of trying to visualize how it would overlay a sports center. We explained how the community was prepared for the disaster we had in High Level and that because of that, we saved the government two hundred and eighty-nine million to six hundred and fifty million. And we felt that, you know, we should be given a few dollars for saving. And the minister actually said that was a well-played move, so maybe there will be, hopefully, if he's still in the ministry. He did promise to support this and even champion it at the cabinet table if he's still there. And he will set up a meeting of the entire cabinet to see this plan and hear from us. So that was probably the most productive. And the conference, the rest of the conference, it wasn't as heavily, it wasn't, there wasn't the heavy education portions that there normally is. They did include two ministers' dialogues, which were interesting to watch, especially to see if the people could beat the clock when asking their questions. We also heard from the leadership, every one of the UCK members were there and they gave their spiel and even took some questions. The premier was probably the highlight, cause he kind of poke fun at himself during his address. And as he was given a standing ovation for his tireless work over the past three and a half years, he commented that this obviously wasn't a caucus meeting, because people were clapping for him. He was really good, I wish he would have been like that through the entire time, maybe he, but we all know why. Anyways, and Rachel also gave a, an address and was applauded, cause she said she would not blow up the RCMP. So those are the highlights that I picked out, there's probably a lot more and the rest of council that was there can comment on it. So if there's any questions, I will answer them. Seeing none, could I have someone move my report, please?
I'll move your report.
Counsel Welkey, all in favor? Carrie? Deputy Mayor?
On September fourteenth, I attended a Mackenzie Regional Waste Management Commission meeting. It was our first go in the budget. You'll be happy to hear that even though we have the shortfall in post-colder costs, that there'll be no increase this year in tipping fees. We're going to see whether or not there's increased revenue through contaminated soil, that we expect to, to have another big year for that. And also attended the Alberta Municipalities Convention, the twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third. Also participated in the meetings with Ministers Panda, Shandro and Horner. One of the education sessions that I went through was on municipal infrastructure challenges and going forward. All of these presentations are supposed to be made available through the website this week, so hopefully, maybe administration will get a chance to watch that one in particular. There was two different models that they talked about. One is IPD, Integrated Project Delivery. And this had been done in Weynminster, coincidentally, on a wastewater treatment facility, I think just over fifty million dollars. And apparently, this technique has been tried in several locations throughout North America. First time it's ever been done on a wastewater facility. And basically, what happens is everyone gets together from the engineers, all of the trades, sub-trades, contractor and the municipality. And at the beginning, there's a profit pool that is set for the project that everyone would share in based on a successful completion of the project. And they talked about the challenges that they had faced and they're on track to complete it by the end of next year. They're already a significant way through, there have been zero change orders. They are zero dollars over budget. They have met many, many challenges that as a group, they get together and decide on how they're going to do this. There was another method, that basically is a P three that Watascom had done on a, a similar project when they simply didn't have the funding capability. Anyway, really, really interesting. Some of the general comments that they had made at the beginning, Graham Construction, who's one of the biggest contractors certainly in, in Canada and into the US as well, on some of the projects they're bidding on, their suppliers will give a delivery date for materials, but will not give a price. They'll say the price will be determined on delivery. They highlighted the, rural municipalities of Alberta are in the process of building a new facility right in Nisku along Highway two. And prices for materials are only guaranteed for seven days. And apparently, that is the new thing in all of these, that there's just such volatility in pricing that, that they're just, it's becoming more and more challenging to do some of each project. So we're not alone, but this IPD sounded really, really interesting and hopefully, it's something that we could take advantage of. One final thing, and sorry, I forgot his card. At the trade show, I talked to a gentleman from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. At first, he didn't understand what said he was and when I said, well, you were one of the funders, he quickly got up to speed. And when I was talking about our wastewater and wanting to see if the province would recognize the D N A as a municipal partner, he had said that they were prepared to champion the idea to do some research. He had said that they'd had some similar success in Ontario a number of years ago. The original documents forming the reserve in that case, basically referred to it as a municipality. So he said that they could go back and do the research on what documents were at the very beginning for the D N A fund, for the reserve, and use that as an argument. He said that he thought this would be one of their major projects and that if they did nothing else in the next year, that he would be happy and that they would be talking about this for fifty years if they were successful, so. I believe Haley also talked to him later and got a similar impression, she probably has his name.
So what do they need from us?
I, I think he just needs contact from us to say, hey, this is the issue and they'll start doing some research and see what assistance they can give us. They have done a couple of other wastewater developments and, but more as the funder, although in the one case, I believe it was a fifty million dollar project and they were able to contribute a three million dollar grant to that.
So can we get administration to follow up on that?
We'll get the content information from the D N A.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have.
So this session, this wasn't the wastewater session you were at, was it?
No. This was on the Wednesday, I think we had a meeting with the minister during the first session, this was one of the second sessions. And sorry, I gave my booklet to, it was beaten, for the actual topic. But it was in Tillis, one oh four to one oh six, and it was on infrastructure projects and.
Okay, so yeah, I talked to the mayor of East River about the same project.
Yes.
And they were looking into it as well. And it wasn't just wastewater, it could be any of them.
Any, any infrastructure, just the two. So they had speakers from two different sort of contractor groups and then used two case studies, one from Weynminster, one from Watascom. And Weynminster was this IDP and the Watascom one was a collaborative project development or something like that.
And how much were those projects?
One was fifty million and one was eighty million.
For an IDP?
No, 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 no.
Oh.
The IPD, Integrated Project Delivery is the method by which they follow to build these.
Yeah.
And it was really quite something, cause the one, they were focused on building the one that had sort of the, the in-ground stuff for the treatment. And once that's in place, they build the floor and all of the infrastructure, so the electrical, the motors, the pumps, all the rest, go above that and it turned out that once the foundational work was done, that that piece that was gonna go in the bottom was delayed by six months. So rather than going, okay, everything's on hold for six months, the group got together and said, okay, how can we meet this challenge? They shifted the entire project over to another area to work on for six months. They lost zero time, zero change orders, zero extra cost. Everyone was working together rather than the traditional design build.
Interesting.
It was very interesting.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Counsel Anderson?
So I attended the same municipal, upward municipalities convention in Calgary as the mayor and the deputy mayor. Also attended the meetings with MP Panda, Shandro and Horner. And I will reiterate with Maristek with Horner, I thought it was a very good meeting with him. I also did think that with Panda, it was, well, with his deputy ministers, I, I thought we made some ground there. Because he was not really focused, he was off wanting to do his dehavulin thing. But the deputy ministers were much more, seemed to be much more receptive for what we were pushing and asking for than they have been in the past. I also attended a information meeting on the seniors' housing. It was quite informative, but in the end, what I took away from that was that unless they can. but in the end, what I took away from that was that unless they can hire staff, they can build all the buildings they want, but they can't make them operate. And that's going to be their bigger, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes, sorry, just to follow up on that for administration. At the deputy minister that Councillor Anderson was talking about, did encourage us to resubmit our application to the Water for Life. He said the next intake is in the neighborhood. I did say that my understanding that we had been denied by that. We did bring up having the Denny recognized as a municipal partner and that they were also going to look into that. So it might be worthwhile to reach out directly to the deputy minister when we submit that application referring to our meeting and saying this has been done at their request.
It may be prudent of us to send letters to each one of the ministers thanking them for and reiterating what they did to us and we can say we are resubmitting at that time with at your request? Do you want to make that a motion?
Sure, I can make that motion.
Okay. Did you get that, Miss Beaton?
I just held the recording.
Okay. Okay. And so all in favor of that motion? Carry on. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councillor Jessamyn?
On September sixteenth, we held our Child Advocacy Center Steering Committee meeting. We now have a new name for our center. It's the Bison Child and Youth Advocacy Center. So we're pretty excited about that. It is up there with the Caribou and the Caribou Center at Grand Prairie and then the one down south, we just lost the name of that one. But we're pretty excited about that. We are having a art contest for our logos. So they've submitted that across the north, northwest here to the schools, North Peace Travel Council, getting it out there and the winning logo will be a five hundred dollar prize. So we're pretty excited to see what comes in from that. We're hoping that we have a good turnaround for that. So yeah, exciting times. The center continues to grow the numbers while it's being used more and more every month, which is sad in a way, but the services here, which we're excited about. We have a new center, or new electronics there where children and families can link into the courts and give their testimony through this system. So this is also, we receive funding from a group down south. The equipment has been set up and is operational and it's actually been used with the center down in Edmonton. So they utilized it. So pretty exciting about that. Things are happening and moving along, so.
Is it in the provincial building or are you?
No, we're in the Flom.
Oh, Flom, great.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to see it.
Yeah, we're actually, I'll let you know because tomorrow actually, or the next day, the RCMP are coming. There's going to be a bunch of groups coming to visit and get a tour of it. So I'll send that out actually then first.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, I think it is.
Hope it's not at two o'clock.
So I'll check here. So also this month, TGP has offered to put the center as the roundup organization. So we're pretty excited about that. Typically, there may be more than one organization for the month, but this month here, we were the only people. So we're excited about that. So encourage everybody to go and round up as much as they can and it's all for a great cause. And yeah, Steering Committee were ecstatic about how things are moving along there. We're very fortunate. We have a very strong manager there, Julie, so it's good things. Victim Services, we held interviews this month as well, and we've hired a new coordinators assistant for Victim Service. Again, pretty excited about that. In that, this person is coming from Grand Prairie. Their family's moving up here. Both of them have jobs. She's come to work for us and she was working for the detachment down in Grand Prairie. So the security clearance is, we don't have to go through that process. So very happy about that. So it's seamless. I think she's only going to be here a day or two and she's going to be starting work right away. So we're over the moon about that. Our one employee's been very, very busy over the last two years and so it'll be a great addition to the Victim Services. As well with Victim Services, we still have our eye on the provincial changes to the overall system as we go to regional themes in the future, which will mean that we will no longer see the individual communities with individual boards overseeing those centers. So they'll fall under a regional concept. There will be a regional board and, but we'll still have all the same employees but reporting to a regional.
Is that Victim Services?
Yeah, so there's concern about that, losing that local feel to the board members being linked in. You know, we're already talking about our fundraising events because we have those local links and stuff. There's a feeling that we may lose that, but I'm not too concerned, but we have to wait to see how that's going. So we're figuring that in 2024 will be the handover to these regional, regional concepts. Twenty twenty-three, they will start to implement it, look for board members, directors for them and start to set things in motion.
So which areas will they be, will our regional hub be?
It will be the northwest, so your Peace River up. It's going to be huge. So there would be one, yeah, there would be one regional center for the whole area.
That's not good.
So the last year and a half, there's been, there's been sessions for input from the centers and Jackie from PACE at Grand Prairie is very, very vocal, does not like that concept, along with a number of other agencies that she's linked in with, voice their concerns and it seems like they're.
So who's making this move?
The province?
Which department?
Justice.
Would it be, would it be justice? Have they not learned from AHS?
Jackie said the same thing last.
Well, we're on the same team. Maybe I should get vocal with her.
Yeah, you know, but people like Jackie who's been involved with Victim Services from day one and been around a long time. She's put a lot of energy in as well as everybody else that's been involved. So it's hard to see that go that way. We'll just have to wait and see how things.
I could see it in our Mackenzie County area, but that's too far, so.
It's the same judicial district, so.
And?
No, no, I agree. I think we're such a big geographic area and we've said that to how many ministers, right, that we're sort of unique, but that didn't carry much weight with the AHS one. And they did either. At least we're not looped in with Fort McMurray this time.
Yep.
So yeah, again, North Peace Travel Council has been amazing with the Child Advocacy Center. Their support has been huge. They've been donating twice this past year, so.
That's good.
Yeah, we're over the moon about that. Very frustrated with the government that we don't have a steady stream of funding for this yet. We're hoping to see it, but as always, it's a frustrating thing. We still require certification and hopefully that will come here in the near future, which will give us more clout when it comes to that funding. So that's it for me.
Any questions that we haven't asked? Sorry, we've been hogging this time. Okay, thank you, Councillor Jessamyn. Councillor Lambert?
On September twentieth, I attended a chamber meeting. We discussed implementing a strategic plan. Obviously, none of the funds that the town has to hire somebody like, whoever we hired, but anyway, we are going to try and come up with an idea ourselves and go from there. We also chatted about upcoming events like Midnight Madness and how to kind of make it a little bit bigger this year. Last year was, wasn't as great, but I think going out with COVID hopefully being gone, we can have a bigger event or better event. Other than that, a few other things we have to discuss in closed session. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Councillor Welkey?
On Friday, September twenty-third, I attended the arrival and reveal of our new Zamboni at the arena.
I saw your picture.
Ran down there with Councillor Lambert as well was there. Nice, great looking machine. I think it'll be an excellent addition to our arena and hopefully, fingers crossed, we will be bringing this topic up again and again in the future. But so that was good. And then also just attended the opening weekend, one of the showings of Guitar Lessons, the movie. There was a great, great turnout and I think it continues on this week for two shows a night. Councillor Lambert was fantastic in the movie and his minor, small background role looked great.
Was he plowed and around?
Uh, he looked, he looked pretty, pretty happy.
It was actually so short though, when I looked over for a second, I looked back and it was over.
No, but it was a good turnout and we wish Aaron and that film all the best. And I also have a small matter to bring up in the closed session as well for my report. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Can I have someone move to accept council reports? Councillor Lambert, all in favor? Carry on. Council's action list, any, any questions?
Just an update, Madam Mayor. The water and sewer agreements were forwarded to the Denny town as has the fire service agreement. Now the big one, I'll give Mr. Jesus a call this week. Sure, that's all.
Any other, okay, can I have someone move the action? The action. Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carry on. Council project status. Any questions about that? Yes?
Just a question for Director Stroh. I'm excited to see the machines out patching and crack sealing. Yeah, really good work and happy to see that. Just an update in what the closing season, how much you figure you'll have done or what will be outstanding by the end of the season?
And so closing, first of all, the biggest portion of our season is our paving project. So that starts this week. The subcontractor doing curb and gutter and sidewalk will be in town until October. So the next ten days will be really busy around Rainbow Boulevard as well as the sidewalk along Ninety-seventh Street. Both of those projects will be going. We anticipate the paving, the milling and the paving and all works to be completed no later than October fifteenth or not. Spray patching and, which is the larger plot holes and cracks as well as the crack saving are going to continue on in between other projects. We do have some completion work to do on our new storage shed. We have to do some site work there to get that ready for winter. And we do have some drainage lines to put in around town. We're doing some work at the Yarns in Park with drainage line there as well as over Dogwood area. And then over on Gateway, we're fixing that stuff there also. So in between on the nicer afternoons, we're out spray patching and crack saving as much as the weather allows. So I hope to get a lot more done. It's, it's working good so far, so. Carry on. All the trails are done. So if you're out walking on our walk-in trails, they're all complete.
I noticed that. So those baked craps like that, they don't seal them right up, right?
No.
So they just go down the side?
Right, and over time. So that's the first seal. And then next year, we'll go and put some aggregate in and then seal it so it's level. This is just to stop the, we had to go in and weed black out and burn all the weeds out of the cracks first. So it took a little extra work. But the process is working good. Steady manpower and new weather, we should be able to get a lot more done.
Looks good. Thank you.
The crosswalk that was just painted by the school, are we doing all the crosswalks like that or?
The, the orange crosswalk?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that was a, no, not as far as I know. So that was a one-off request. The operations came in and assisted with them. We cleaned the crosswalk up and laid the orange paint down. And then another group came in and finished the crosswalk and decorated it. And so far, that's the only one that we've had a request to do. I'm sure council receives some requests going forward as to potentially other crosswalks in town we may want to do in whatever fashion, but that's yet to be seen.
Dea only approached me about a week and a half ago, so it was a quick process. But I'm with you. I'd like to see it on Main Street next year.
I just, if.
Associated with schools, right?
That was one of the reasons when we discussed it with Dea, she liked that spot because probably half the kids in town walk across that crosswalk. I had to give them that.
But the flag downtown's good?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do.
The orange flag?
Yeah, we have all the five flag pole setups.
Yeah, they're, they're green.
We have our Alberta and the town and the city flags up as well as the Every Child Matters flag too, so.
All right. Just to, did everybody realize that Rainbow Lake got funding?
For?
For broadband? Rural, remote and indigenous? Yes?
Um, well, to add on to that, actually, I was looking at the list. I did notice that a lot of, let's say, First Nations communities were the ones that did get the funding. So I'm wondering, is it because they're so close with Chate?
I'm thinking so too.
Because I was told that Chate has fiber there. So is there maybe an extension off? I know we have it here, but I think maybe they're just working with a little more closely. Although, I mean, we do it bushy right there too, so.
I don't know what their reasoning is. They never tell us.
And second question, just an update on, for Director Stroh, on Ninety-second Street, one hundred and fourteen thou. See, the tender was complete. Just wondering, do we have any, any news on that at all?
And yes, Councillor Lambert, the tender closed. It has, well, it's in the tender award right now. The project's initial start date is until spring of the year. There was no plan on starting this year. It'd be too late. There's a significant amount of work there. Administration has to finish some funding. We're looking at local improvements as well as dementia issues, yet that has to come back to council. I think that's where we're sitting on that project right now. And as soon as funding is set, then we'll bring it back to council for final approval on the award of the tender. Director Phillips will bring forward a borrowing by law for the balance of that and then we'll work with the adjacent landowners on the final approval.
So the RFP stated that it wouldn't start till next spring?
Yes. So the tender was tendered with a sixty-day award notice as well as a start date till next spring. There, there was two benefits to that. One, late season, we would have got poor asphalt if we would have had a restart date and a half complete. The second benefit, because it will be first thing in the new year, we'll get on the project immediately and we'll be able to get that work done before any of the other work comes out. And hopefully if there's, well, not hopefully, we do have tentatively budgeted for one hundred and third street to be paved next year also. So while they're in the area, it could save us on ongoing projects while I have them staggered.
While we have you on the hot seat, what, oh, sorry, I'm next.
Sorry, I was just going to add on to the one oh third. Have we finished any studies on that, on the widening of it at all or?
That's, we will be, that will, we're going ahead. Yeah, so we haven't started that yet. That'll start up here shortly. One of the advantages of having a consultant in town doing the work on Rainbow Boulevard is we will use the survey crew that's here. So we're not paying for all that extra travel to do the work. And then over the next month or so, we should start working on and developing a plan. And then over the next month or so, we should start working on and developing a plan for next year.
There's a number of options. We'll work forward on that with side marks and lining.
So sorry, back to 92nd, you don't need to deal with a place. But starting in the spring, are there going to be any issues with coming out of logging season? Like, that there are going to be traffic issues, do you think, with Water Toca, or?
Yes, as with any road within the municipality, there's always traffic issues. We have a comprehensive TAS, which is like Traffic Accommodation Strategy. Worst case scenario, we'll shut down 92nd Street and then come down 114th. And it'd be, they have access either way. So we will probably, depending on the work that, and the phase that it has to be done, we will accommodate the traffic, and there will be shutdowns, especially on 114th, because it's being widened slightly too. We do have a little bit of work yet to do with CN. We have to do a bunch of work with CN to clarify the moving of the signs. We do want to widen that track slightly and improve the railway crossing. Operations went in this year and filled the crossing up with asphalt to get it through the winter season. It was pretty rough, and we had a lot of complaints. So we want to improve that whole intersection as part of that project.
I'm glad you brought up CN, because here's another letter we need to write, Clark. CN, Minister Panda did suggest we go after CN for tearing out that railroad crossing and making people go down 92nd to 114th.
Was that during the construction portion of the Highway 58?
Mm-hmm. So we do need, so Clark, we could give a letter sent to them as well.
I believe Transportation's response to our query was that they would have had to do that had CN not denied them crossing on that, that area.
So we'll go down, he said they would write a letter too. So we should go down that rabbit hole. The other thing is, hey, you asked enough questions. I see. What about, what about the airport? Is that not starting right away?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the, all the kiosks, the airport main terminal is shut in right now, and we're bypassing it. All the kiosks and all the furniture and fixtures have all been removed. And the forest, I think people should be on site today or first thing tomorrow morning.
Good.
And then it'll be about a two-week shutdown for the whole process. And then we have four.
Can't wait to see.
We did have some issues with the kiosks and cabinetry and the pricing, and that will be coming back to the task force as we're elking some additional quotes.
Okay.
The same level or note as broadband, I was talking with Mike, Mr. Mike Parnell from Tall Creek here last month, and Tellus is made, was supposed to make a big announcement on September 1st, but both Tall Creek and South Creek were receiving cell towers. For their.
You mean north and south Tall Creek?
So each community will have cell coverage now, full cell coverage, so pretty exciting, but I haven't seen the towers, but.
I was down the road, didn't see that.
Still no cell service there?
No.
All right, any more questions for Mr. Stroh? Seems he's, seems to be on the hot seat. All right, thank you. Could we have a mover for the capital project? Council Anderson, all in favor? Carry. Events, is there any questions about the events listing? Yes.
Festvale's is still listed as the 23rd, but it's the 22nd. Just, I'm not sure how many people look at this and want to make sure they have the right date to get their tickets.
I think if I change back, because I changed.
Okay, can I have a mover for that? Lumber? Council Jessamine, all in favor? Carry. Financial report? Any questions? Did we get our money from Mackenzie County yet?
We did. We received our $1.4 million. So we're all paid up until next year.
Which is January 1st?
Yeah, January 1st. Well, I guess they have to, we have to invoice by July, so we have to pay by July 31st. I believe it's on our contract.
If there were no questions, could I have someone move the financial report? Council Jessamine, all in favor? Carry. Number 13-1, blanket exercise.
Madam Mayor, I was going to say, I know you guys found out at Alberta Municipalities, but we did receive our Burner Barriers fund as well, our $2.6 million.
I think we knew that, didn't we?
Yeah, I told you.
We told you in Albert.
The Mackenzie, I thought we had it before that.
No, we arrived on the Wednesday.
Oh, maybe I just knew, because I stopped in here.
And it can be used tools for multi.
Yes. Okay, CAO?
Madam Mayor, I have 13.1, the blanket exercise. There should be a copy of the email I received from Ms. Jennifer Seawick-Ham, and that's there for council's discussion of possibly conducting a blanket exercise at the Committee of the Whole on November 21st.
For staff and council?
I would say senior staff and councilmen.
Do we want to invite some of the Denny council?
That would be definitely an extension.
So maybe we extend up to them as well? Yes.
Is this a cultural ceremony all type?
Well, we were going to do this, what, three years ago?
Pre-COVID.
Yeah.
As part of our setting. You know, just to go through it, so everybody had a better understanding of reconciliation and what happened, you know, in the 200 years or 400 years. So can we have a motion on that?
I'll make that.
Council Welkey, all in favor? 13-2 budget?
Madam Mayor, it is fall, as you can tell outside, because they're all picking up leaves. And that means we're into our budget cycle. Administration just wanted to know what council's preference would be. Last year, the last couple of years, we've broken it up over a number of evenings, focusing on several departments or a couple of departments each evening. Your capital budget, you set back in June. We would bring that forward again just for ratification for this budget. But if it's council's preference, what we would look at doing is between Committee of the Wholes and maybe an extra Monday night here or there, spread the budget over, aiming for council adoption at the December 12th.
Spread it over what?
What we do is, for example, have community services and planning development on the same night. And that would just be, we just focus on those portions of the budget. Because of the strategic plan, we're going to bring the budget back in a line item basis. So every item in the budget will be explained and there for council's review.
It would be nice to spread it, like, I don't know what other, what the council feels, but to sit here at night till 10, 11 o'clock after you've worked all day is difficult on both the staff and council. And it's difficult to make decisions. People want to get out of here, they don't want to listen or talk. So I would suggest spreading it over.
That's our preference as well. We find that's a lot less stressful to try to. And then the individual who gets the 10 o'clock shift and gets to explain their budget probably just might get the same amount of attention as the one that started at 7:00. If that's okay with council, we'll put together a schedule of which, which pieces of the budget we'll do in a, in a lot of time, so we'll bring that forward to the next meeting.
Is that good with the rest of council? That's just my preference.
So by line item, you mean the way we've done it the last few years on a true line, where Keith needs a pump, so-and-so for this apparatus of the water treatment plant? We're not that level of detail, we're.
So, well, we would break it down, like, in Keith's case, the chemicals, we'd actually break down each of them. Now.
They do that on the site.
There's an implication, yeah. Well, actually, if we're working on department by department, you're not going to get as large a package. But for example, under council initiatives, you've got a number of things that you would do under cultural initiatives, fix your fence, that type of stuff. Taking a look at an explanation on each one of those programs, and because of the strategic plan, is that something council wants to continue? Our affiliation with some organizations as well, one at a time, to have those discussions as a fit within the strategic plan. So this gives the chance, being the first budget that this council as a whole gets to do in its entirety, then council has that, and the next couple of years, there'll be a tweak, and then four years from now, we can do that process over again.
I don't think you mean you're going to go line by line and see how it fits into each strategic.
Well, there might be some things that we're doing that don't fit in the strategic plan. But again, the line by line is maybe a little misleading. Are we not going to pay our utilities, or? There's some things you're going to gloss over quite quickly. So we're concentrating more on programming, the stuff that council does, maybe the organizations were part of and that type of stuff.
Okay, so you'll bring, is council good with spreading it? Do you want a resolution, or just?
No, I think that's good. We'll bring that forward, and then you can adopt it. The other thing, Madam Mayor, I wanted to ask is, would council be interested, especially as we're putting together the capital projects list, of renting the handy van and perhaps doing a tour, looking at some of the roads and stuff? We may have to do that on our weekend, because our evenings are getting a little darker every day. But is that something council's interested in? Or would you prefer that we just sort of let you do that at your own, on your own time once we get that stuff together?
A tour of all the facilities?
Well, we could do the tour of the facility, I was thinking a tour of our roads.
Well, I think we've been over all of them.
I wouldn't mind going as a group.
We'll do it on Light Up the Lights, and. And what's the rest of council view?
My view is that I think it's a great idea. We don't do it enough, so it's an opportunity to have some one-on-one with the directors and have that discussion.
Yeah, and we can set up different events, like one with a tour of the facilities, one with a tour of the roads, and do it on a couple of different things. Just to be, there's probably some streets that some councillors really have no reason to ever see. They don't walk around town on every street every day.
No, neither do I, but I drive around every street.
Can you say any down the same?
Okay. We'll, we'll.
One comment on the handy van, they have one driver, so. If you're going to deal with that, you have one driver that you have to, has to be able to accommodate the.
That's good, right?
That's good.
Unless you have that license.
No, it doesn't matter whether you have to license or not.
It's the training to run a van.
He's not licensed to drive it unless he fills out all the paperwork, because insurance won't allow it.
I know that. I was on that committee.
Maybe it's a good time to encourage other drivers.
We've tried.
Don't mind, we'll talk, it's on the committee as well.
People all want these things, but they don't want to have to do them.
All right, Madam Mayor, we'll put something together and bring it back to council's review.
Okay, so under 15, or sorry. Yeah, I guess 13-1 is. Something wrong with my book? I got 12-1 here. 15-1 is the letter to Mackenzie County. Could I have someone move the correspondence for information? Council Lambert, all in favor? Carry. Could I have someone move us into closed session, please? Council Lambert, all in favor? Carry.